One, I'm Bill Carlson. Welcome to Cafe on Tampa Online. I've got my colleague Dell Acosta here to introduce our speaker.
Good morning, everybody. Our program today is poverty in Tampa and Hillsborough County, a very compelling subject. Our speaker is Terry Egan. He's project manager with the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. Terry, take it away.
Morning, everybody. I'm Terry Egan. I'm the project manager slash research librarian at the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. And today I'm going to give you an overview of some research we've been working on on concentrations in poverty. A trend report spanning the decades from 1970 to the most recent census data release that came out in 2018. And before we begin, you're going to be seeing a lot of news articles coming out on the topic of poverty, primarily due to the impacts of COVID. There were some came out beforehand. I put a link to a couple here. There's a great article from Christopher O'Donnell at the Tampa Bay Times, as well as a excellent article out of the New York Review of Books summarizing the current research and literature on child poverty. And then finally, our own story map and research at Plan Planning Commission on our concentrations of poverty, which has a series of interactive maps that you can go and see the trends that I'm going to show you in an interactive way. So before we begin get into this, I want to concentrate on an overview of what is poverty? Because prior to the 1960s, when there was a lot of discussion about poverty and we began tracking poverty, there was no way of actually measuring it in a meaningful way. So we looked at, they looked at poverty in a number of different ways. It's essentially a what, you know, people are either in poverty or they aren't. But the difficult question is to why? We're not going to get into that into a great detail in this presentation as to why. We're focused more on the where the spatial components is shifting movement of concentrations of poverty throughout the area. But you can see some of the whys, whether people are explained away poverty as individual factors, cultural factors, or related factors of policy issues. And the big hurdle I have in presenting this presentation is the question is, why does poverty even matter? How does it affect us? How does it affect me? You know, I'm not in poverty. I don't live in an area that's had high concentrations of poverty. And there's two main factors. There's the the moral ethic argument that, you know, poverty is inherently bad. And there are certain obligations we have to one another to mitigate poverty. And there's also the economic and social cost. There's been numerous studies that even small poverty spells for children can have great impacts for them later on in life and also affect society. There are also negative consequences for areas of concentrated poverty, whether it's crime, blight. And then there are costs to various social systems to help remedy these problems related to poverty.
Yeah. And Terry, if I could just for a second, this is Bill. If you ask Moaz Limiam, who's the dean of the College of Business at USF, you know, this, these poverty numbers also hurt our chances of recruiting companies that want to invest. So investors individually, high, high note with individuals who want to invest, companies that want to invest, the best and brightest talent that look at our community, they pull up the real numbers of our community. And one of them that really holds us back is poverty. And so that's one of the reasons why we had this discussion this morning, because it's such an important topic. And by the way, while I have the floor, anybody who's watching live, please, we do this as a community service, please hit the share button. So we can, so you can share this information, important information with your friends. And if you have any questions, anytime, post either to the bottom or to the right of the feed and we'll ask them as soon as he's done. Thanks, Terry. Sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no problem. So if we understand what poverty is relatively speaking, and why it's important, then the question becomes how do we measure poverty? And like I said earlier, it wasn't until the mid 60s that the federal government came up with a mechanism and set a criteria and formula on how to identify how a household with the householder and the dependents are in poverty. And we measure poverty to highlight economic disadvantages, set eligibility and benefit standards, and then also assess effects of programs and policies. And so when we measure poverty, we're looking at one thing, but it can be explained in a number of different measurements. We're talking about poverty thresholds, but those also get teased out in the word called poverty guidelines. And then there's also something called the ratio of income to poverty. And poverty thresholds are a kind of like a single dimensional measurement. It's essentially all before tax money income. And it's only updated annually for changes in the the cost of goods. It's adjusted for family size. It was this very old measurement. It's very controversial because it was created in the 1960s. It gets, it doesn't get refined. It gets updated based on the changes in the cost of living. But being an older tool, it allows you to do analysis over time, historical analysis. And the same values are assigned everywhere. And what does that mean? So this is what the poverty thresholds look like. This for 2019 is a big kind of ugly table. It's got 48 cells depending on where you are in in here. If you're below that income, you're in poverty. And so I'm not sure how well this will show up on the screen, but for people with two householders and two dependents, you're in poverty if your income is below $25,926. Like I said, this whole street, whether you live in Washington DC, El Paso, Texas, border Colorado doesn't adjust for geographic areas, doesn't adjust for the varieties and the cost of living. And this is the revised poverty guideline. So you hear them used interchangeably. Poverty guidelines are just a streamlined version of the poverty thresholds.
Hey Terry, let me ask this question. Um, we're talking about affordable housing or housing affordability, but they that the affordable housing guidelines, they talk about a percentage of AMI. Is that right? What's the difference between that number and these poverty numbers?
I believe the AMI is a derived value. It's created by HUD and it's used for the actual metropolitan statistical area. I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to look that up, though.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Would you explain to everybody what the AMI is?
The area median income, it's a different value is like a numeric threshold that if you fall below that number, I think it's 80% of the AMI, whatever that AMI might be, it might be $60,000 if you're below it. You're qualified for certain HUD benefits. I believe that's how it works out.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to take us off track there. Go ahead.
So now you have, this is an alternate measurement of poverty. Some of you might actually be more familiar with this than the other ones. The ratio of income to poverty, whether someone's near poverty, it's a ratio of 100, 125% of the poverty threshold. In poverty, you're at the threshold or deep poverty. So if the value for a family, four, two parents, two children, deep poverty would be 50% of the value. So if your income was $13,000, you would be in deep poverty. And there was a book that came out about three, four years ago called Getting By on $2 a day, where the authors did an in-depth analysis across the country, calling through a variety of income data, and they posited a new threshold, new category called extreme poverty, where you are at 25% of the poverty threshold. So instead of getting bound $13,000 a day, you're getting by on roughly $6,500 a day. And they found there's about 1 million people in the US who are getting by on $2 a day or less. So we're going to transition over away from the definitions and the themes into looking at the actual poverty, the neighborhood level. Poverty, the neighborhood level, we're using census tracts, which are small geographic boundaries that have a set population threshold, which remains relatively constant over time. And we're looking at tracks where 40% or more of the residents are in poverty. We're using a special tool that came out of Brown University where they took census tracts, the boundaries as of 2010, and they retrofitted them back to 1970 and all the subsequent censuses so that we'd have a constant geographic boundary to use to track changes over time. And we're looking at the concentration of poverty from the city centers and or downtown into the suburbs. And we're trying to test thesis has been very common right now in people who do the analysis of concentration of poverty in that we're seeing a dispersion away of high concentration of poverty from the downtown central city area into suburban development. And just to kind of show you where we're looking at, this is the trend that has occurred over time. You have the 1960 poverty rates and the decline after the a massive policy initiatives were passed in the late 60s as part of the war on poverty. And you can see where the trend is now for the US, Florida and Hillsborough County. And right now, and we certainly expect this to go up with everything's been happening with COVID. We're looking at a poverty rate in Hillsborough County of 15.7%. So now we're going to look at where those 15.7% reside. And this is the 1970 poverty concentrations by census tract. You only see one that's outside of the city area. So down here, there's an inset map of downtown Tampa. You have Harbor Island. You have portions of West Tampa, Ewer City, and then you have this outlier of Plant City. This is 1970. When we get to 1980, the map has changed. We're looking almost entirely in downtown. You still have West Tampa. You still have downtown where county center is. And then the moving outwards into portions of Ewer City. So this is 1980, 1990. Not much has changed. It's still fairly concentrated in the downtown area. And then we hit the lowest concentration of poverty in the year 2000, where we had a big whoops, boom in the economy and the a lot of the tracks have dropped out. We're not seeing as much concentrations in poverty. And then getting into 2010, we see that trend that was being discussed. And part of this can be explained when we were in or coming out of the Great Recession. So you see downtown, it's expanding east. You have the university area popped up for the first time. And so you see that area over here.
Terry, let me interrupt for a second. So it's, am I correct that this is a migration of poor people out of the neighborhoods where they were living to new areas? Or is it just the people that were living in the in the areas like in the USF area suddenly became poor?
It would be a combination of both. I mean, we'd have to deal, drill down into some of their income data and do a bit more in-depth analysis. But clearly, you know, this this pattern tracks the business cycle. So when you have a recession, you're going to have more people in poverty. You're going to have more tracks light up. But also, you're seeing a shift based on policy decisions started in the 90s of decentralizing concentrations of poverty that were in the traditionally in the downtown area. And I don't want to say push, but people were being shifted away and out. Like, I can't really explain what's having happening in this Palm River area here. That seems anomalous, but that's, that's where we are. We have a higher concentration of poverty. And that will stay the same even when we get out of the recession, we get into the data from 2014 to 2018, which is here, you see a lot of the high concentrations have started to tamp down, but you still see, at least in the downtown area, a shift away. It's moved slightly further east out of the concentrations that was solidly there. And then you have the remaining high concentrations of poverty tracks up in the university area. And probably you're going to see the same map appear that we had for 2010 to 2014 for the next census data that comes out reflecting what's going on in COVID right now. So that's, that's the shift. That's the trend and concentrations of poverty. And then I put a little slide in because when I asked this before, people that said, well, what do we do about it? I didn't have an answer. So I looked through some of the literature and there's been different proposals floated from a wide variety of sources. You can look at them. Probably the one that is the easiest to implement would be the participation in the Earn Income Tax Credit, which has been a pretty popular tool for people with low in low income, working families to earn, you know, between $3,000, $5,000 every year as part of their tax filings. But there's other, other tools available. And it's been 15 minutes. So I think that covers everything I was going to cover in this presentation. I'm ready to field some questions.
Yeah, thank you. We've got a, we've got a couple of questions from the floor if you, and if you want to take that presentation off.
Okay.
One question. Yeah. And one question is from PJ Somerville, who's the president of Caffeine on Tampa. She said, do the ratios of income to poverty apply across the country? And then also Rusty Carpenter asked the question about the impact of COVID-19 on the numbers in the future.
Well, yeah, the ratio of income to poverty, if that was a question, that's going to be the same across the country. It's all just a ratio based on your income related with respect to the forthcoming census data. The census collects data monthly, collecting income data. And of course, part of that would be the poverty data. So we're going to see this data come out. Now there's a cycle of where they publish the data. So the data comes out in at the census tract level in four-year, meaning five-year chunks. It's a survey set. So the next set that's going to come out will be next year in 2019. That'll have a little bit. And then as we get into 2020, it'll probably have a little bit more. The other thing is the census has been implementing these poll surveys where they're tracking in real time. They're texting people, they're emailing people that are on their list to participate in surveys to get a feel for how they are doing for income. I mean, how they're doing work wise. I'm not sure if it translates down to income, but that may be something you see come out later on. If we start seeing peaks in in income or poverty issues, the census may add that to their poll survey to track.
We've got a couple more questions from the floor. One of them is, does the, in the, in the count of poverty, does it include homeless? Is there a way to track homeless numbers in that?
You know, I don't know how they track the homeless in with that question, because most of their census data is based on household survey responses. So someone lacking a household would probably not be included in it.
Another question is, if you had to pick one policy to focus on, what change do you think would be the most impactful on poverty locally?
If I had to pick one, I'd probably go with the $3,000 child tax credit. Allocate $3,000 each year per child. Maybe a federal policy that has to be implemented.
Can I ask you a question? So we're, you know, we're all trying to figure out how to address this issue going forward. And so if we just look at the last 10 years, and there are all kinds of things happening. We had the Great Recession and now we have COVID-19. But if you just look at the last 10 years, could you tell us what the, again, what the trends are that you saw? We saw the maps about how people move from what you called the downtown area to to other areas. But what are the spatial changes? What are the number changes did? And so we also, before COVID-19, we had one of the greatest economic booms in in America's history. Did our poverty rate in Tampa Hillsborough, did it go up or down or stay the same? And where did poverty shift?
So if the poverty rate has been essentially the same for, you know, since the 80s, I mean, if you look at the data, it modulates, you know, a tick, a point or two based on business cycle. But it's going to be around 16%, 15%, go up to highs 18, 19%. But what we're seeing is a high concentration that is going to be children and through a series of changes in where the poor have been living over time, you're seeing a shift away from concentrations in a kind of center, center city model and moving them out to lower income where the rent may be a little bit cheaper to the university area and then easterly down in the Palm River area.
Terry, how does our poverty rate compare with other cities and counties in the Tampa Bay region? And then if you have time, how does it compare to the national averages?
Um, I have not compared it to other municipalities or the area. I was more I've been focused more on how does poverty does, is Hillsborough County unique? Or is Hillsborough County following the national trends in poverty dispersion? I thought we would not be following it because we have a kind of a a different development pattern, you know, being a Sunbelt city. But no, we did follow, followed exactly how they predicted we would follow it. We're slowly migrating out into suburban areas or quasi-suburban areas from a central city. The poverty rate, I believe, were less than the state of Florida, but higher than the national average.
Dell, do you have any other question?
Well, I was going to follow up. You state that childhood poverty, is there any tracking of children continuing to stay in poverty as they become adults? Or is, what is the shift that takes somebody out of poverty? Someone that has been raised in poverty, how do they get out of poverty?
Well, from just a numerical sense, you know, if they're in a household that moves from that income where you're below that threshold to above that threshold. But the key thing to understand about poverty is that we don't really talk about it as much in this presentation, but episodic poverty, where you have a spell or two where you're hard to make ends meet, can't afford the rent. It doesn't last, but events like that can be very threatening to a household. So the Fed publishes a annual report on issues with income as it relates to households. You know, one of the factors, and you hear people talk about a slide, it's that 40% of households right now cannot be able, would not be able to absorb a $500 hit to their income. They would have to either, you know, borrow money from family, put it on a credit card, do other things. But in that number, 12% of those households would not be able to absorb that hit at all. They have no other mechanism. They can't go to a title loan place. They have no credit cards. They have no recourse to family or friends. That's the issue that we're dealing with when we talk about episodic poverty in that they may not be able to handle it. It may take them a while to get out of it. It won't be a 10-year spell, but it'd be long enough that can have lasting repercussions to the children in that household.
Terry, there's a couple of questions from the floor. Two of them are about minimum wage. And just so everybody knows, Caffeine on Tampa is nonpartisan. We, we ask all questions, so we want to be fair to everybody's point of view. And if you haven't already, please hit the share button so everybody can see this information. What we're trying to do is raise awareness about the numbers, which is the poverty rate. And Terry, we're putting you on the, on the spot for some questions that might be a little bit political. So okay, you work in the research department at the Planning Commission. So if you feel uncomfortable for whatever reason, just tell us that. We brought you here to, to look at the data, analyze the data. But here's a question. Would raising the minimum wage drastically change poverty levels? For instance, poverty is defined as 26,200 for a family of four, which would equate to a minimum wage of $12.50 per hour if one adult was working in the household. And so if another question by someone else said, you know, would a $15 an hour wage change, change that, change the poverty rate?
You know, from a numerical standpoint, and being nonpartisan, I would say, you know, it probably would, just from a numerical standpoint. You know, the other people that argue against that for the overhead of how it would affect businesses. I'm not a labor economist expert, so you really want to field those questions by someone like that. But just from a strictly numerical perspective, then, you know, probably.
Let me ask you another question. So one of the things we hear a lot about poverty is the number of kids in our school district on free and reduced lunch. And it's a very, very high number. I forgot what it is exactly. Maybe you remember, but how, how did those two numbers come together? So if our poverty rate is around 15 or 16% and I think the free and reduced lunch rate is above 50%, how, how do, how do you marry those two?
I'm not sure. I believe it has to do with one of those ratios where if you, if your household is within 200% of the poverty rate, you qualify. So if you think about what 200% of the poverty rate would be, that'd be a fairly high number that would put you up around, you know, $50,000 or something like that. So that would put you and make you qualify for a free and reduced lunch.
Terry, let me ask you another question. And your statistics, you didn't mention farm laborers and migrants. Does, when you evaluate poverty, does that include the temporary seasonal workers that live here? Or the migrant farmers who some of them happen to live longer periods of time?
That's an excellent question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how would they consider non-ag workers as well, what we're looking at in the, these reported data, I believe. But I would have to double check the sources to verify that as to what's being captured and who's being asked.
Do you know also, Terry, how, how much of our poverty rate is affected by in-migration? Sometimes people assume in Florida that if someone's moving from another state that they're rich and they're going to buy a big mansion somewhere. But there are people who are below the poverty line that are moving to Florida and into the Tampa area. Do we have any idea? How our poverty rate is affected by that?
No, no, I don't know how that would be tracked. But I do know, having done some research on in-migration and out-migration, that it's almost awash. It between state migration is not nearly as consequential for Hillsborough County like it was saying in the 70s. It's been diminished. And most of the in-migration that you see is from other counties moving in. And those numbers are almost equal by the number of people moving out of Hillsborough County to those corresponding counties. So I don't think it'd be a big, big impact.
One of the, one of the things people have kind of been saying, I follow some of the messaging here. You know, talking about spatial poverty, you know, there have been some policies by the city and county to, to do redevelopment, in some cases gentrification. Is there, is there a way to correlate the cost of housing with the, the pattern of migration? So if, if the, if, you know, on the, on the west bank of the river, there was a high number of affordable homes that were torn down. And so then suddenly there's a bunch of people up in the, in the USF area. Is there, is there a way to correlate or track? You know, where there's available affordable housing versus, you know, where the, the levels of poverty are?
It's difficult because some of that data is simply not available. One of the things that we're, you contend with when you do poverty research is that someone who's got one or two bad hits on their credit may not be able to find affordable housing in a traditional apartment or house, and then maybe working in these other areas that charge them much higher rates, but overlook their poor credit history. So in that being the case, it's difficult to find any type of market research that will capture what those asking rents are in these areas.
Dell, did you have any final question?
Well, I have a kind of a comprehensive question. And Terry, just let me know if this is something that you're not prepared to answer. You've prepared a lot of excellent statistical information about what, where the problem is. And to a degree where it exists geographically. How do you see your study being used by policymakers to better the lives of the people in Tampa Hillsborough County?
Well, I would like policymakers to be able to take this up and run with this research and, and kind of look, it's almost like this research is the first step. I see this as being more of a comprehensive atlas of building layer upon layer of other demographic data or socioeconomic data. You know, we know we're We know where high concentrations of poverty are and we know we're moving. Now what are we going to do about it? What other pieces of the puzzle do we need to find out, um, going in there? You know, is it, is a racial ethnicity breakdown? Is that the next step? Is it, uh, areas that have high? Children? Are there areas that have high, um, senior citizens? What other parts of the picture do we need to flesh out of this to move forward and come up with some type of targeted policy actions?
Have you started to take your, your presentation on the road as, you know, using that so that policymakers are seeing it and, uh, internalizing it?
Um, a little bit, um. Poverty is not the most pleasant of topics to present to people, so they're not always wanting to hear, you know, bad news. So, um, as, as long as we maintain the offer, we publish this both as a PDF on our website and as a, a, a story map. Which is basically all the maps are live and interactive as well as additional data, video, um, explaining some of these topics. So it's, it's available.
Terry, on that note, um, we're out of time. Could you want to plug, um, any websites that people can go to for more information?
Um, yeah, let me. Give me one second.
And while you're doing that, I just wanted to say thank you and especially thank you for taking the tough questions. Um, you know, we, we at CAVIC on Tampa, uh, want to have, um, uh, you know, difficult conversations, comprehensive conversations about the. About the community and, you know, the information you're presenting is, is critically important. And, you know, a lot of, there are lots of community leaders from. You know, diverse backgrounds that participate with CAVIC on Tampa. And, uh, the better we arm them with data. Uh, you know, the better they're able to, uh, make their decisions.
Yeah, I'm having trouble finding it right now, but I'll tell you what, um, it is in the slide. So if someone's watching this live. They can, um, oh, I found it. Give me one second. Let me share the screen. If you go to Plan Hillsborough and search for concentrations of poverty on our website, it's planhillsborough.com. There is a interactive story map with everything I presented to you plus videos. And there are the maps themselves that you can go in here and interact with as well as additional data like. For eviction data, um, redlining data, in- information about gentrification. So all that's available. It has an ugly URL at the top. So your best bet is to just, uh, Google, uh, concentrations of poverty on our website. But that would, um.
That would be it. Thank you very much for, uh, participating with us on a Friday morning. I think this is your second time with us and we hope to be back again soon. Uh, thank you to my colleague Del Acosta for his help, uh, and to PJ, our president, and, uh, Barbara Deacon. And Sandy Ree for, uh, other board members. And, um, uh, thanks, everybody for watching. If you haven't already, hit the share button. And one final thanks, um, I'm actually, I use a virtual background, but I'm in my brother's office in beautiful downtown Sebring today. Using his free wifi. So thank you to Jeff for doing that as well. Thanks, everybody. Uh, see you next week.